The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
All right, I'd like to call the special board meeting to order. We have five board members here, Mary Bronson and Mike Black are excused. Mary will be coming later for our regular work session. And we want to do the items for this board meeting. I would entertain a motion and then we'll have our discussion.
I move the technology purchases as presented.
That's the motion. Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and we'll turn it over to you for discussion.
The what? You do, to call the roll, you mean?
No. So go ahead.
Okay. As requested in December, there was more information that you desired about the devices. And so, as we move forward, I reported in the board report that we had searched for the answers for the questions that you had. And we are making recommendations then for many things that you'll see on page two, which would include 650 Lenovo laptops from GovConnection, 1,000 Acer 720 Chromebooks from CDW Government, 4,000 Hewlett Packard 14-inch Chromebooks from Camera Corner Connecting Point, replacement peripherals and items to keep as spares from Camera Corner Connecting Point, 112 iPads from Apple Computer, 80 MacBook Airs, 11-inch from Apple Computer, some LabQuest probes for science from Burnier, Jar cart upgrades, Jar is the brand of the carts, and then some different carts to hold these devices, and those are Bradford carts, eight of those. With this, we will have a variety of devices for our students to use in the schools. Purchasing additional Chromebooks will also allow netbooks to be put into libraries so they can be checked out by students who do not have access to a computer at home. If they don't have wireless internet access, they can use something called the Kajit, which is a wireless hotspot that works very similar to Wi-Fi that works off, well, it does work off the Sprint network, and it is filtered. So when students are at home, they can have the internet and a computer at home to use, checked out. Okay, so those are the recommendations that we are making this evening.
Other questions?
Did you pay attention to tracing on the data?
I did, yes. We purchased 100 devices, or that's a quote I have, and it's 250 megs per device per month. But again, it's not like we're paying the rollover fee, and it's a 30-month payment, so on average, it comes out to $19.83 per month.
So is it, so is it device by device, we would replace the data bucket, or is it one huge?
One huge data bucket.
Okay. And it's how much then, monthly?
It averages out to $19.83 cents a month.
Per, per device per month?
If it were to use the average amount of data.
Okay. You mean the average, or for to use, or if we were to go through it all?
250 megs a month.
So there's a, so the, and then it rolls over, or it does not?
From what I understand, yes, it does roll over.
Okay. So then, we're still, we're still paying something if it sits unused, but we're accumulating more data?
Right, we can get more data.
Thank you.
I was going to comment, now I've been through some of this already, so I don't have too many questions. But the, the last time you were here, I believe, was an Acer 710, and this is a 720. You want to comment on that, and assuming the 720 is a newer model?
It is. There was a significant difference in our testing when we took a look at the 720 model. We compared side by side. We did not, we did not see the deficits that we had seen in the 710 model at all. And so, this 720 really performed. I don't have it here as a sample because we had to send it back right away. It was such a popular model that it needed to be downloaded in other places.
Did you find out, have a chance to find out, where they can be repaired and where the turnover time might be?
I did ask, and Camera Corner Connecting Point can, they are a Lenovo repair shop, and so they can fix Lenovo laptops. But, and yeah, we're not getting Lenovo Chromebooks. And then with the Acer's, I'm checking, I'm continuing to check to see who the, who the repair shops are that are authorized around here.
It was Acer and also HP, right?
The HPs are repairable at Camera Corner Connecting Point, right on site.
So then it was the HP, then it was the Acer, because it was two that you were going to check into.
Right, the Lenovo and the Acer. So what I need information on, yeah, is the Acer.
Acer, okay, got it.
We're also getting some extra.
We are, yes. With the Acer's, CDW had, for value added, offered 50 additional. And for the HP, they added for value-added 20 additional devices. So that means we can keep those in reserve. So when we take one back to get repaired, we can switch it out with one that we have on reserve so that the student doesn't go without a device for a long period of time.
I'm a little bit concerned that we don't know where the Acer can be repaired and the cost and turnover. I was hoping we'd know that by, by this evening. Obviously, I'm assuming by your recommendation, being on the table, that you don't anticipate a problem with that. I don't know if I'm still comfortable with that. I guess I...
Wasn't Diane, when you, you and your team tested and looked at value-added, didn't they provide for you at least a turnaround pickup and turnaround time? Didn't all the different companies provide that?
They provided delivery dates, but they did not provide, they didn't tell me how long it would take to pick up and repair.
So some, some did though, didn't they? Isn't that, I mean, I think some of the value-added, obviously, local was a huge asset because they said they would come over and pick them up.
Right.
But Acer did not?
No, and in my call to, or my email to Camera Corner Connecting Point, the answer was yes, Lenovo laptops, not Chromebooks, but thinks that Acer can be repaired by their shop. But again, it's not sure yet.
You don't have confirmation.
I need to confirm that.
Are you thinking the repair centers will be something local, that we could drive them over from?
Authorized, like Acer Authorized Repair, or Lenovo Authorized Repair.
But I mean, would we have places like that, locally, just to take them to?
Yeah, that's the...
I mean, because that's the...
The advantage.
The advantage.
Right, so they don't have to get boxed up and shipped to where they were shipped from, correct?
That would be my concern, not knowing, is that if there isn't a local one, then we're looking at shipping costs.
Right.
Just, just as a point of information, Camera Corner doesn't go to the various schools and pick these computers up. They still have to be brought someplace, then Camera Corner will pick them up from that somewhere.
We centralize them here. So they're all returned here, or brought here, and they'll be picked up here, and then they'll be returned here, and we deploy out. That way, we can keep track of them as well.
And I think that was the other issue of the value add with these extra no charge ones that they're giving us, that we would have those on hand in case we do get failures. Obviously, when you get that many, there's going to be some that are going to happen. And then we could turn those around right away and make sure, as Ben said, that the students are not out.
Should the board approve this now, when would you actually place the order?
We can place our order this week.
I would be comfortable agreeing with this if you find out prior to placing that order where you can get service and low cost, and if there's a showstopper with that, then come back to the superintendent. But I just think that needs to be covered before you place that order.
Okay, so we could work on getting confirmation of who an authorized Acer repair center is.
Prior to placing the Acer order.
Correct.
Good.
That works. And you're, when you say cost, I mean, it's hard to know what the cost to repair a computer is because it depends on what the problem is.
Well, I bow to the expertise over here on that. If they, if it comes in and it looks like it's appropriate from what they know, fine. If it's out of line with something here, then we need to talk about it. Or at least, it needs to be brought to superintendent's attention. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment, I appreciate you taking the time to get the devices EM so that you could actually check them out personally and with other staff. Like, that helps us make a more informed purchase.
Right, thank you. You know, we're not going to spend a lot of time in effort in making sure we get the best product for our money and appreciate the work that all of you done to make that happen.
It's all still magic to me, but I trust your, your expertise.
Great. I, I know that what I appreciated was the, that curriculum and instruction looked at it, and many people put their hands on it, the tech folks did, from a technology perspective in terms of functionality, but also those looking at it from a student's user, what that would be like. And to me, that was really important because, you know, if I put the wrong tool in front of a student, and that's really what Diane has really brought to the district, is the recognition that you have to have the right tool to get the best results for students. So I think that that has helped. It looks like I'm out online now as we're talking through the Acer. It looks like a lot of people sell it in the, you know, Best Buy. I mean, there's many, many places that it can be purchased locally, so I can't believe there wouldn't be something nearby. You know, I mean, there's a lot of places that sell it, so.
So we will find that authorized.
Yeah.
I do have one question, I think I remember reading this in here, about smarter balance assessment. In one of, in one of the paragraphs, you mentioned that they would be able to use, um, I think? Or am I making this up?
We checked it.
No, we checked, I got our check.
Well, I guess my question is, which of these units that we're purchasing will be usable for smarter balance assessment? Obviously, we have a much higher need for that in terms of volume of children at the elementary and middle school level. But I just was curious, which ones are used, can use for that?
Um, the, we would have, for middle school, we would have the HP 14s available for that. And then for elementary, we would have replacements, and so that would be the Acer 720s. Our, in talking with Stephen Miller, in our conversations, the priority would go to computers that are hardwired at this point, have the blue ethernet cable in them. But we're definitely taking look at possibilities with these for devices that can also be tested. But again, we want to make sure that our wireless is the best it can be before we can continue on with, with testing on these devices, so.
So our, are our computer labs at this point, those are our hardwired computers? Are all those computers capable of running smarter balance?
They are, yes. Yep, that's our first choice. And then as our computer labs are being used, we're going to have more devices and carts that students can, can use in their classrooms then.
All right, are you ready to vote?
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Karen 50. That was quick. I'll move, entertain motion to adjourn this special board meeting.
Shall we move?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will adjourn. We have a work session meeting that begins at 5:30. All right, I'd like to call the work session to order. We'll start with our open, open forum, which is a time for members of the community to speak before the board. I don't have any slips today, but is there anyone who would like to speak before the board today? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. We have six board members present tonight, Mike Black is excused. I'm also joined to my left by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent. We have two intercity student council members, Priyanka Navani, who is president of the intercity student council and attends prequel, and Morgan Stary, also a member of the student council, and she attends Southwest. Does he hear you?
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm here. Um, sorry. The, um, let's see, then we'll move to our teaching and learning work session. And I'll turn that over to Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. Our first discussion item is going to be the naming of the gifted and talented school. Tammy Van Dyck will bring her committee up to the table. And I have to say, I was privileged to be a member of this committee, and it was one of the best-run, most articulate group of students participating in this committee. And with that said, I'll let Tammy take it.
Well, I'm joined at the table this evening with Xander Newman and Alyssa Sgrazio. And they were also on our facility naming committee along with Assistant Superintendent Paolo. And we are bringing forward the name this evening for the School for Academically Gifted Learners of the Lita Hollingworth School for Gifted Learners. You received information. Lita was an accomplished educator, and she is finally known as the mother of gifted education. When I read, I learned about her the first time that I took one of my gifted education courses, and I thought she really embodied a lot of what we believe about our school. And I'm going to let Xander share a little, and then I'll go on.
All right, so our school motto is learners and leaders, and the, so it goes down, like, I don't know if you can see that. So the L, so it goes down, leaders, L is learners, E is excel, A is altruistic, D is determined, E is engaged, R is respectful, and S is safe. And we try and live by those, and Lita Hollingworth definitely was a leader, you feel like, and a learner. So, uh, she began the first school for gifted children, the Spire School in New York City. And she's the first person to say gifted children with high IQs, and she followed them all the way up until they were married.
And she also had, starting her school for gifted kids, she also had a school within a school, just like we did?
Lita also came from a family where going to school was not easy for her family. There were three girls in her family, and their mother died when she was, the youngest daughter was born. And she grew up with her grandparents, and she went to college at a young age. She was a very bright young lady herself. Put herself through college, after she was married, moved to New York City, where she then got her master's and doctorate degree. And so she was, became a very well-known researcher, and did a lot to contribute to the field of gifted education. Much of her work, they believe, laid the foundation for what we know about gifted learners today. But one of the most important parts for me was that not only did she know that it was important for gifted students to get the specialized educational services that they needed, but it was also important to remember that they also needed the social and emotional support that goes with dealing with the gifts that they have. And so she felt it was important to combine both of those things, which is also a part of what we believe at our school as well.
And then also a quote I liked from her is, "To have the intelligence of an adult and the emotions of a child combined into a childish body is to uncover certain difficulties."
Xander and I should know that because we all look who she was talking about.
And Xander, there was one other reason why we thought it was a good choice. Can you share that with the group?
Because it has a good ring to it.
Let's get to the bottom of it, Xander, that's just over the edge.
When did she, when did she live? What was her, what years was she alive?
She was born on May 26th, 1886, in Nebraska, and she died in 1939, in New York City.
We did talk about trying to contact any surviving relatives to have them be a part, if this is the name of maybe our opening. Shirley Paulson is actually one who advocated for this name, and through the process, because she doesn't have any, we're not sure who her survivors are, and Shirley cares so much about Lita, we decided that maybe she was the last surviving long-distance relative. We think she is, she's a long-lost niece, so we are willing to, to accept her as that.
And Shirley did some research and found out that there is a gentleman who has some of her papers, some of her research papers, and that he would very much like to be involved if we choose this name to be a part of the opening of the school.
Are there any others, is her name on any other school, not that you know of?
There, Shirley, there is, there's a couple of them. Not Wisconsin, but Shirley, there are, there are Hollingsworth schools, a couple of them, but we're not certain.
If it's her?
We're pretty sure it's.
We're think, we think it's her, but not in Wisconsin, and certainly not in our area.
Those are the least one.
Pardon me?
Ohio.
Ohio.
I believe also there are a lot of Hollingsworth institute or organization to promote GT. And they might have names for you on relatives, because they've been in existence for a while. At least that's what I saw on the line. Did you, did, I have a lot of questions, but one of the students had read it, was it variability theory? Between males and females, which she tried to debunk. Did the kids, did the students learn of that? I thought it was very interesting. I had, I had not heard that theory before. No, we'll discuss that theory later. I, I, I personally liked the name, other names considered. I also personally hoped that we could find somebody GT from the Green Bay area that, you know, could be named after them. But I guess we don't have anybody there, other than you guys grew up, we're naming a school after you. Does that sound?
We did, we did consider other names, and Tammy used a nice process for us to be able to kind of weigh in on what were our first top choices. And this actually came up to be, I think, everyone's first choice.
Except for one.
Except one, who did a yellow card, which meant they could certainly live with it. And I think one was Isaac Newton.
Steve Jobs.
Steve Jobs.
And Einstein.
Einstein, and there was one other.
Roosevelt?
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt, Teddy Roosevelt.
So I think the group felt that they felt pretty strongly, as a group, on one name, and there was really, of all those that remain. We had some discussion about what might be attached to some of those, and whether it was appropriate or not. And felt this was our recommendation. And her work on behalf of gifted learners really stood out in the discussion. Not only, because there were other people that were considered or mentioned that studied gifted learners, but she actually put together a school and programs for gifted learners. She took it one step further. Andrew?
You know, a couple of, couple of additional things as I was reading up about her. She was, she was one of the first people to call exactly what, although she was in the testing profession, she called it exactly what was going to happen. She said the, um, this is, this is sarcasm. The adding machine has tremendous advantages over the child. It does not lose its pocket handkerchief, it doesn't kick or yell, so we must be prepared to take pants. So she knew, she was going at this idea, which she knew was, was happening then and was going to keep happening, of not looking at students as a, as a number, and she laid it right out there. And she also, in addition to the variability theory that Dr. Wagner had mentioned, she was, she got Terman, who the, one of the IQ tests is named after, to change his mind about men being more gifted than women, because she demonstrated that there were social factors in his test. And so 100 years later, what are we realizing again? That maybe tests aren't, maybe standardized testing isn't too bad from a gender bias perspective, but what bias does it have now? So I was, she is, she's someone I would have gotten along with. So I think it was an excellent, excellent pick.
Any other questions or comments?
You could have other parents and adults on the committee, besides the staff, Andrew.
I think that reported has the list.
Yep, if you go back down.
Yeah, it was an extensive committee, and it was nasty weather. People drove through the nasty weather to get there, it was an important meeting. Hearing no other comments or concerns, the next step, we'll move it forward to next, our next meeting, which is the regular board meeting, and we will actually take the vote to, to approve.
May I ask one question of the students?
Sure.
If you're not in position to answer this right now, that's fine. But how did you, as students, enjoy being on this committee and studying all this? What were your feelings about that?
It was cool that we got to be a part of naming our school. I don't know, well, I don't know a lot of people who are in a new school, but if I did, I'd probably, I don't think that they would be involved in naming our school, so it's cool for me.
Yeah, and definitely, like Alyssa said, and the fact that this doesn't happen often, that this will definitely, this name will be around for probably at least 100 years.
And you are part of its history.
Yep.
It's exciting.
Any other comments, Dr. Wagner?
Well, I would hope in a time capsule, that committee's by name would be in there, whom they were, for that 100 years.
There you go.
Good idea.
We actually have a student, a couple of students who are keeping track of the whole process from when we started, so they're our historians.
That's good, that's good. So we will meet again the 17th, no, the 24th of March, and that's when we'll actually take the vote, to make it official.
Very good.
Thank you very much for being here.
Excellent presentation.
And I need to be myself back. We have a unique learning system update. You can all come up front, come on, guys, ladies and ladies. I'll, I'll stay over here so that they have a place to sit, because they're the real...
I'll, I'll stay over here so that, um, they have a place to sit, because they're the real stars tonight. Last spring, you, our school board, approved the purchase of Unique, which is a web-based curriculum for students with significant cognitive disabilities. And tonight, we want to give you an update about what your approval has done for our students in Green Bay and where we are headed. So tonight I bring with me, um, Kate Malkar, who is our program support teacher for students with cognitive disabilities. Her main job this year was to support the, um, rollout of Unique and the teachers who teach that. Along with her is Andrea Solper, who is a high school teacher from West. We wanted to get a representation from all grade levels. Um, next to her is Ashley Cantelberg, who is an elementary teacher at Jefferson. And we even had to be male and female gender integrated. John Brecklin, who is a middle school teacher at Redsmith. And, um, the two girls teach students with strict cognitive disabilities and then John teaches students who are on the spectrum, the autism spectrum. Along with them, where did Sue go? Sue Wieland is also here, if you have questions to support. She is our assistive technology support person. And she has also helped tremendously with the rollout. And with that, I will turn it over to Kate.
All right, well, like Claudia mentioned, um, the curriculum, you'll hear it referred to as the ULS or the Unique Learning System. We're using it in twenty-two of our schools this year, thirty-one teachers, approximately a hundred and eighty students right now are being influenced through the Unique Learning System. Overall, we've had a real positive reception to the curriculum from the staff, from the students and from the parents. Um, we created a little video to kind of show you an overview of what the curriculum is currently looking like. And then if you have any questions for any of us, we'd definitely like to discuss. So that kind of gives you an overview of, of what Unique is to us and what, what we're doing with it on a daily basis. If you have any questions, um, you know, we have three of the different grade bands. Right now, we're implementing it kindergarten through transitional years, so through twenty-one. And that's all represented here. So if anyone has any questions about how things are going so far.
Chris?
Uh, thank you. Uh, am I correct in saying this curriculum is for the, uh, more involved youngsters?
Correct.
Okay, and, um, are, are we now serving all the involved youngsters? We intend to be serving this particular curriculum? Or is it going to be expanded to another disability group?
We're, we're serving all the ones, all the students who would be served by this curriculum presently.
Okay, thank you. And one further question, if I may. Uh, Tammy, uh, I mean, I've heard you say that you're really happy with it, everyone likes it. Do you have any comparisons from the past as to what sort of growth you're seeing with the youngsters now as compared to previous curricula?
That's a good question, because in the past, we didn't have a set curriculum. It was, we used the standards. And then it was a lot of teacher-driven, teacher-created, IEP-driven lessons from there. And here, what we have is a curriculum that meets those needs, but also addresses the standards, also has more of an academic rigor behind it. Um, and we can put some, um, we can validate it with our assessments. And so we have these monthly assessments and we're able to actually put, um, you know, put, quantify our progress. As opposed to before, we would look at our progress reports and we'd look at the IEPs and that's when we would look at the progress and say, yes, they're doing better. How much better? Better than they were before. It was just, it was, um, hard to really quantify things. And now with these assessments and the data collection, we're really seeing, um, a lot more with the numbers and feeling a lot more confident that we're making that progress.
And if you go to page two of the document that we provided to the board, there's a, um, it talks about the percentage of increase, um, on the assessments from the beginning of the year to the, to the, um, mid-year, um, benchmark assessment. So there, what's occurring is benchmark assessments that are unified, that are, um, universal and everybody's doing them the same way with the same benchmarks. And therefore, we're able to see that there's actual progress across the district and for students at all grade levels.
And with talking to parents, um, through parent-teacher conferences, they've also seen immense growth with their stu, with their child. So even having the parents come back to you and say, wow, my student or my child is growing immensely throughout the school year.
And our students can go from school to school and still be on the same, in the same place and the same month, on the same type of, um, topic. So they can try, not that ours is the most transient population, but if they were to move, they would be able to be in the same, you know, be at the same spot. And Andrea, you gave us an email last week. I'd like you to share some about what happened with your students and the...
Yes, students that have never had access to an iPad before. And what a great experience, this curriculum is fantastic because it's age-appropriate. So even though we might read at a second, third or fourth grade reading level, you're reading things that are relevant and that high school kids would talk about. And that's really important for them to feel a part of that high school community. And being able to use an iPad for the first time, our students went home and they were so excited about it. And they could share what they did. We're, we're getting Google Chrome, uh, up and running for some of our kids so they can go home and read books at home with their family on the weekend. Instead of having everything on paper, they can have cool stuff that's almost technology savvy too. And that's important for them to grow because that's what's going to keep growing as well.
I actually had a neat incident too with one of my students, where she actually does push in for science and socialist content. And it's really neat because it's in alliance with the Common Core, so I'm in the Common Core standards. The things that she was actually learning or going over in her regular ed class, we were going over, or we went over the month before. So she's getting the exposure not only in my classroom, but also when she pushes in with, uh, with her regular ed peers. So that's, one thing that I thought was really cool is that they're not learning how to count ten butterfies over and over and over again. They're learning about George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, the start of our country, the, our region of the world. Um, all these really neat things that are, that are actually age-appropriate, so.
I think that is one thing that we were lacking in the past is, I think everybody had the basic intentions with this functional mindset. And there's definitely still room for that and definitely still a need for that. But this really brings in some academic rigor and just melds the two together in a really nice way that we're getting the best of both worlds.
Brenda?
When you mentioned the parents noticing growth, is that specifically the academic areas? Or is it confidence or functionality? What, what kind of growth specifically do they, do they see?
Well, just a couple of examples that I've been told from parents is academically. Um, a couple of my students, one of my students is non-verbal and she's speaking two to three-word sentences all of a sudden. Um, and she can now count to five all by herself. So I don't, maybe it's just the repetition of the curriculum and the different, the variety of it. Um, but as long as we're sticking to the same objectives, I mean, she's getting it. Um, and then another student, um, just, I think because it's divided up in different levels, there's a level one, a level two and a level three, that we can differentiate and pinpoint what this child needs. Where, in the beginning of the school year, he couldn't even sit down in a chair. So being able to teach these students what they need and helping this curricu, this curriculum, helping us guide these students where they need and at their level with iPads, with pictures, and getting him to be able to actually sit down in a chair and learn is great growth from where this child was coming from, so.
Well, just speaking of the technology aspect of it too, um, like four of my seven students are considered non-verbal and they do have talking devices. Um, there's a wonderful app out there called ProLoco2Go, um, which is for an iPad. And what's cool about that is it uses the same syntax that Unique does. So I'm able to pull pictures right from the Unique curriculum and put them right on his talking device. So where this kid who, it was so tough for him to participate in the past, now he has a voice, now he can just, he can match the picture. He can do things like that and participate. And just to see, like, I'm lucky enough to have, or fortunate enough to have a, a smart board in my room. And just the different interactive things that I can do with a lesson pulled from this Unique curriculum onto the smart board and have the kids, I've never, the engagement is just amazing. I'm used to them, you know, standing over there at the wall and now I can look across and they're all attending to what I'm telling them or what we're going over as a class.
Celeste?
Yeah, Claudia had told me about this long ago when we first met. And so, good to see you again. I'm just really glad to see this come to fruition. And so we don't have any issues in terms of making sure that all the students in the classrooms are outfitted with whatever that they need. There's no issues there?
No, we, um, the special education department, oh, I'm hoping not. The spec, they can speak to me better, but the special education department actually purchased, um, printers so that they all had access to printers in their classroom. Um, we've come across the fact that they were running out of paper and their buildings didn't have a lot of paper, so we purchased more paper for them. Now we're on to the ink, so we purchased more inked for them. Kate meets with them every month. Well, that's what I'll get to, that Kate meets with them every month so that we can go and make, um, work on collaboratively together to develop books and collaborate about the, the different units and what we can do with those units. Um, in the meantime, Unique actually got the iPad application. So in order to save paper and whatnot, we now made a commitment to purchase a set of iPads for all of the classrooms. The caveat is the teacher has to get trained on how to use the iPad before they are able to access the iPad. These, these three have done so, so they have their iPads. So as the teachers are trained, because we don't want to just put them out there and let them be toys, we want them to be educational tools. So they all have iPads. Um, our next endeavor is the smart boards. So that we can be doing more interactive things and less paper and pencil.
Okay. Is that part of the iPad purchase or is that separate in the special education budget?
Our, yeah, our department is working closely with, um, special education as well.
We, we purchased it. And that's what Sue Wieland is here, she's supported a lot of that rollout. And the ProCol, ProCol, like Polo.
ProLoco2Go.
Yes, and she's been supporting of that, supporting that. But we've worked closely with Diane and the technology department to ensure that we roll this out in the best possible manner.
Okay. That's good.
Are you working with the therapists as well in terms of accessing the augmented communication devices?
Yeah, any kind of therapist, speech and language or OT, um, I do give access to the curriculum, so they, they know what I'm working on. Um, I try to, you know, give them my lessons ahead of time just so they know on what specific day what we're going over, so they can reinforce that. And with communication being so well between us, um, it works really well. So like, the speech knows what we're working on, what we're going over. She can tailor her lessons to that too, so it's, it's really nice to be all on the same page.
And they were all trained in the curriculum too, so that they were right there in alignment with the teachers?
The licenses for the curriculum are classroom-based and so it's not like this teacher has a specific license to her, it's for her class. So any students or any teachers or therapists that are working with those students has access to that, to that curriculum. And we encourage anyone, regular ed teachers, the therapists, speech and language, to get in there and see the curriculum and, and take their share of the, of the curriculum each one.
Very good. Awesome.
Brenda?
Back to the, uh, chart on page two. Um, there's plus greater than one point and plus one point. I guess I'm, I'm just curious if this is, um, what the, I mean, I assume Unique has sort of the expectations for growth and built into the system. And, um, you describe it as a twelve-point scale. Is that twelve, twelve points between kindergarten and, and high, and twenty-one? Or is it by grade level anyway? If you could just flesh that out a little bit more for me.
Sure, each monthly assessment, which is called a checkpoint, according to the, the curriculum, um, is on a twelve-point scale. So it's each month, they have a maximum of twelve points.
Oh, okay.
Per whatever they are tested in. And so they, most of the kids have a content understanding, reading, math or word recognition assessment. But then we also have our students who are more participatory, um, the maybe one percent of our population, and then they have just one assessment each month and it covers all of those things in one combined assessment for a maximum of twelve points. So it's really, it's every month, what are they maximizing themselves at? And math is where we're seeing the greatest progress, especially at the middle school level, where our students have made a growth of over two points on average per assessment. Um, a lot of times, when we're talking about this population of student growth, it's, it's a long time coming. And so I feel really successful in that, just in the last four months of using the curriculum, we're seeing growth of over a point and then two points. I think that that's a real positive thing.
I think it's important for parents and students to feel that way too. You might feel like you've hit a plateau, but here you can actually show promise and theories. Plus it would be nice because I could see at the middle school, I could look at where they were at and I could kind of tailor to what they need when they got to ninth grade. Right now I don't have any kind of measurement that's consistent, but then I'm, I'm up there. That would be really helpful for me, because then I would know what they need and give them the right supports right off the bat.
And when Kate talked about the level, the, um, level one combined and she said that was one percent, that is our students with the most significant multiple cognitive and physical disabilities in the district. So that's why they participate in the curriculum, but they make, even they made a one-point gain on the scale in, um, but their progress is even much slower than everyone else's, so.
Any other?
Just, uh, a general comment. It's, it's nice to hear these good things going on. I, I guess what I, I like about it, that the kids nowadays have a way to communicate better because you, you, you don't, you don't know what's behind, uh, that body and that, and that brain. That brain, when that body is, uh, has severe disabilities and can't communicate back. And, uh, you know, maybe we have some more Stephen Hawkins out there, who knows? But I, I think there are, there are more kids there that are a little brighter than we, we think and I think you're seeing, could be seeing that.
I agree.
And Ashley, um, Ashley shared a story with me this last week. Um, a student of hers who, the beginning of the year, I mean, we were really challenged and, and he, um, it was really hard to find an access point for him and to get him engaged. And just last week, it's, I think it's, my take on it is the consistency of the symbols and the consistency throughout his day. But now with the iPads and the symbols, he actually will go and get the iPad and bring it and show you what he wants and use it as communication. So I just, and it's hard to paint the picture for that if you, if you haven't seen it for yourself, but it was really moving just to get that, that email. It gives you goosebumps to know what a difference she's making, so.
So, have you shown, I mean, that's a snazzy video too. Did you show that to some parents to help explain what's going on in the classroom or?
She created it just for you guys.
If you have a chance, and I appreciate you doing that, it's good, but it's, the tiny print, it's even at that rate, it's hard to, to read all of it. So if you have it.
Oh, 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 the standards, right.
Available for, like, um, hard copy. If you're showing this to parents, because if you were showing this to parents, I don't know if they'd get all you're trying to say.
We do use, we do use the, um, like, the graphs of the progress for the assessments during, um, parent-teacher conferences. And a lot of parents have had questions about the program that we're using. So I, I've just explained it during just parent-teacher conferences and showed them the program.
Okay.
And then showed them the graphs and how we track the assessments and progress.
Or turn this into a PowerPoint rather than a video, because it's...
It's just snazzy. I just thought, wow, you know, parents would like it, so.
Yes.
But tiny, tiny print. Well, they're younger than we are though, Katie.
I was impressed that Kate created that.
Speak for yourself. You know, if you would have let it go, I would have had, have another comment question.
That's okay.
I, I have to ask with the music, it sounded a little bit like the safaris or had its roots in the safaris.
Wait, who was the group, who was the group? The music.
Oh.
It was just the general music that came with that, that video template. Sorry.
You do know who the safaris are, right?
See, I mean. Let's not go there. Is there a downside to this curriculum that you've come across as you're working through it? That you have had to tweak or need to?
Honestly, you know, I use, like I said, I use, because I'm fortunate enough to have a smartboard already. I use a lot of technology and things like that, and putting up on the smartboard and stuff, it's really interactive. There's, there's only been a couple instances when like, either the technology slows down or it crashes, or it won't print off the news article we create together, and then I have to go through and redo it myself. But other than that, I mean, as they work out the kinks and they, they get used to actually running this organic program, it's, uh, you know, again, because it's always changing. It, it's been fine tuned, and, you know, there's a typo here and there, but you just let them know and they corrected it immediately, so.
And there's about, every lesson, every month has probably 50 to 60 lessons. And so, as they're learning this curriculum, they're having to sift through this to determine what, oh, I'm going to take this piece, I'm going to tweak that piece. So I imagine the initial review of it is time-consuming and creating the materials is, right now, is ti- is time-consuming. And I can just imagine from what I've heard.
That's where Kate comes in really handy.
Yeah. Well, having the printers in our rooms, it helps phenomenally. I mean, like, you never know, having our kind of classrooms, what you're going to get accomplished, when you're going to get accomplished, or if you're going to get that accomplished. So you might get it done really fast, then all of a sudden you're like, well, well, I can search for a filler activity real quick that correlates with the standards, correlates with what we're talking about, and you can just print it off right then and there and hand it to kids and go over it with them on the, on the board. So it's really, it's really neat just to have that at your fingertips at all times.
And the company has found that it's going to become more interactive too. That's their future, so just as our technology is growing, they're going to, so that's really great. Because usually it's the curriculum you get for about 13 or 14 years and then open there and stays. This curriculum's going to keep growing and changing, and it's so wonderful about it.
That is good.
Stay irrelevant.
All right, any other questions or comments? This is strictly an informational piece.
And we welcome you to come view any of their classrooms.
That's a great idea.
I may call your mother, John, and she and I went to high school together. Maybe we'll have lunch and go visit your classroom.
Sounds like you're doing that.
She didn't call you by your middle name, John, so you must be.
Yeah, yeah, she's going to call Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I've got to be back. And we have revision to equal educational opportunities policy in role first reading.
That's Barb and Melissa.
All right.
Melissa and I have worked on this as well as, as on the next policy, to try to make sure that the language in each of the policies complements each other, that it's identical language. The reason that we're suggesting adding some of the language such as gender expression, gender nonconformity, and sexual, sexual orientation, which is already in there, is because we had sent out a memo, but it was quite a blabber, so I'm not sure if you guys still remember the memo, about, when we did the youth risk behavior survey with the students, the group of students that felt the most threatened were the LGBT students. And they felt that they were being more than, four times more likely to be harassed at school because someone perceived them to be gay, lesbian, or bisexual. Only 50% felt they belonged at school compared to 69% of their heterosexual peers, and only 48% felt safe at school compared to 67 of their heterosexual peers. So we also brought in a training called G-Safe that our administrators, the associate principals, and social person counselors attended, I was there, human resources attended that training as well. And so, that is the reason that we are asking to update, first of all, this policy.
If I could just add, G-Safe is working with school districts across the state to ensure that students particularly in the bisexual and questioning category are recognized in our equal educational opportunities policies as well as our bullying and harassment policies. Because while the discrimination on the basis of sex probably does include those students, it's not explicit. And their research and working with various groups across the state indicates that by making that explicit in our policies, it's clear to students that they too are protected from bullying and harassment and are given equal educational opportunities as well. So that, it's, it's really just a clarification. The category of sex probably already includes this, but we want to make sure that we're being as explicit as we can.
Questions or comments?
Yes, the terminology you have in here, did that come out of any regulations anywhere? Or where'd you find, I mean, it just seemed like it was a little over top, gender this, gender that, gender that. You couldn't have a more inclusive one term, you know, to use?
G-Safe is working with school districts across the state, as I indicated. And when we, gender identity, gender expression, and gender nonconformity are really three different things that students who are transgender or bisexual associate with. And those three different groupings make it explicit because a person who is gender identity might not fall in the same. And a gender expression could be a person who is female but comes across as being male, and so that would be a gender expression. Gender identity would be a person who is female but wants to come off as being a male and is going through a transgender process. Gender nonconformity would also be, could be a person who is male, who looks feminine but is not conforming to the, the typical male stereotypes. And other school districts, and I, I can't remember now off the top of my head, have adopted this identical language, and we can get you that information as to what other school districts have adopt, have adopted this language in their policies.
Celeste.
So actually, that just raises a, maybe not a, an important question, but who determines whether or not the student is a gender nonconformist?
When the student would file a bullying or harassment complaint, they, you need to identify yourself and identify what is your protected category and what is the basis of your complaint. So the student would put that in, in the complaint as the basis for their complaint.
So let's say, let's say that you have a student who is a heterosexual girl, but who is, you know, very athletic and other girls accuse her of being too masculine, although she is comfortable being who she is and she is not an identified homosexual. And so, writing, you know, I don't, how would she see herself as a gender nonconformist just because somebody else says that she is?
Well, we wouldn't ask students to use magic language, because that's not necessary in a complaint. But her, her allegations in a complaint would signify gender nonconformity.
But in high school terms, something, a term that high school students would use, right?
Absolutely.
But we would call it gender non, gender nonconformity.
Well, that, that's what it is, is it, that would be gender nonconformity.
Yeah, now I'm stuck.
It would be nonconformity of a certain traditional.
Correct.
Of a.
Stereotypical.
Stereotypical, it would be nonconformity with a stereotype.
Yeah, that's a problem, now that's a problem for me, now I'm having a problem.
But her identity, I would think she, she would need to identify. I don't think we identify someone as nonconforming.
Exactly.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not what I, that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I think. The basis for the, the impermissible conduct would be because students are discriminating or bullying or harassing her based on their idea of what is gender conforming.
Okay.
Right. Not that you're identifying her as gender nonconforming.
Correct, right.
They're harassing her because she is not conforming to their stereotype.
To their idea.
To their idea.
But I'm wondering, who, where is the locus of the nonconformity? The locus of the nonconformity needs to be not with the student who is being harassed, but with the student who accuses of the harassment.
We're saying the same thing.
Right, okay.
We're saying the same thing.
All right.
Sorry that I was not clear.
Yeah, this isn't used to label people, it's just to identify.
No, no, no. The issue's. Yeah, but you know, I mean, documents matter, words matter, so, okay, all right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Chris.
Is, this also being considered for staff? A similar policy?
Well, that would be the next step, that wouldn't fall under what I would do. But that usually what happens is, it does, it will be considered by HR after this, for staff.
Oh my.
It doesn't have to be.
And, and I.
No, I mean, I, no, I'm saying, oh my, that, that's very, I mean, I think that's important.
It's, again, just to reiterate, this really is already encapsulated in the category of discrimination on the basis of sex, we're just being clear as to this being included.
What it means. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Andrew.
It's not for this meeting, but it's, it's probably worth exploring where certainly it's, it's horrible that only half of homosexual students felt like they belonged in school. It's not good either that less than 70% of the majority population feels like they belong either. That's also, for another time, those survey results are concerning to me too.
Mrs. Dorf, are those figures, local figures or national or state figures? From your survey locally, right?
We own that. And is it, you can't disaggregate though by school, or?
Yes, you can.
Okay. So I, just as a follow-up, can you see a difference, or is it pretty much?
Oh, I don't have it in front of me disaggregated by school normally when we report out, we don't.
No, no, and I'm not suggesting, but I'm.
I, we could, we can obtain that information, that it is possible to obtain.
And it is, and it is shared, where does this information go?
The, the information is shared with the school leadership, building leadership teams, so that they can focus on what goals they would need to accomplish.
Brenda?
This is also another discussion, not for tonight, but have we started to give consideration for bathroom, restroom safety in our schools? And have you done anything that has happened?
We do offer some choices when we, when those situations arise, so we've been able to handle.
Okay, so you do it on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, so far, that's what we've been doing.
And you think that that's providing, um, providing what students need 100%? Or, I mean, I'm just, I guess I'm asking about the student that doesn't come forward and say, I'm uncomfortable, you know, going into whatever the rules are, the boys' bathrooms. I mean, I know it's complicated and we have, you know, six stall, eight stall bathrooms and things like that.
You know, we, we don't know that a student is not comfortable using the bathroom unless they do come forward, so we do need some information from the student. We've, we have been working with a few of the issues this school year, and just as, you know, no one is, is similar, no student who would like a bathroom accommodation, their, their request and what makes them feel comfortable with a bathroom accommodation is the same either. So it really is working on a case-by-case basis, and G-Safe has been an excellent resource when we've had these situations and when there have been the little nuances that, well, one situation worked well for one student, it may not work well for another student. So it's really just having a really good conversation with the student and the staff and working through those situations on, on a case-by-case basis.
And I think, also chiming in, I was looking at Andrew because I did do some research last year regarding the number of unisex bathrooms that we have in our facility, and Mike was able to provide me with that data, which I don't have in front of me. But we do have.
We do?
A pretty decent amount of those.
And the signage is?
Yeah, I think the signage is.
Is, I mean, it, it just has the, what, female, male pictures, like a.
Is it, or is it staff only, or is it, you know, family, how, the labeling is?
Yeah, no, I mean, you can, if you go into Southwest, for example, off of the auditorium, as you come in, that's a unisex bathroom, that's very clearly labeled, unisex bathroom. So, I mean, again, I can get the information, and Mike was very helpful in pulling up every detail for me. But I, I think, I was pleased to see that we at least are moving and thinking about that when we look at our building plans. And I think there were more than I anticipated, so.
It's interesting, I study at the St. Albert Library, and they converted just in probably the beginning of the semester, the bathrooms in the library, which are, you know, single-door, single bathrooms. But the signage on them is very clear that it's, that it's not only for males and females, but it says something about, you know, it says all gender and then gender expression, gender, you know, and they, they label it, it was, it was interesting, I hadn't seen, I hadn't seen that kind of signage before.
And I think they're putting some effort into making sure, looking at this.
Especially if we have the, you know, the, the places where it's easy to just make it that way. Like I said, with our bigger bathrooms with multiple stalls in them, it's much harder to do that with.
And not every student wants to use the unisex bathroom either. So it's also working out what is the most safe and appropriate option for all students, and, and not every student wants to use the unisex or the staff bathroom.
May I just say, I hope that it never comes a point where a person that isn't, doesn't fall into any of these, that falls into any of these three categories doesn't have to read the district board policy as it comes to them. But I do think that this helps with a greater inclusivity of all three of these categories, of them being distinct, I agree. And it really helps with the proactivity of the district in protecting any issues that should arise. Hopefully they don't, but I think this is good.
Andrew.
You know, I was, and I appreciate Kim, it was within a couple of days, I think, I got a, the count back and it was 159, so that was very high, it was very high. I reported that back to one of my Operation Snowball directors, who also is a state and a statewide LGBT leader. And what he said to me was basically, it sounds good, now he is from another district, he was happy to hear about it, asking around within some of his leadership circles, the, the feedback that, I don't know if this is secondhand by now, but what came back to me was kind of, wow, that's amazing that we have 159 of them and no one has ever heard of them, and neither have, you know, neither, the teachers don't know either, so.
Yeah, I think that just goes back to what I said before. I think that they exist and, and how we let our students and our staff know that they're there and how they're identified is probably something that, as we move forward and try to accommodate, that we need to take a look at. I just happen to know about Southwest, because I know when I come in, it's right there, and I see it, I don't, you know, I haven't been in the other buildings to look for those, but, yeah. I mean, I think we can look at how we're identifying them and how we're sharing that, but.
And, I was gonna, do we, do we need to, maybe we can look at, do we even need to have people requesting them? Or can we just get to a point of, okay, I have to go to the bathroom, oh, there's a, there's a gender-neutral restroom, I'm going to use it, so what?
I, I would hope that's what we do.
Well, I think now, I think there's a, I think there's a perception, I'll bring it back to some of my student group, I, I think there's a perception that you have to, like, be on a list or, or something.
Besides getting the map and getting you the numbers, I, I don't think we did a lot more research with it, but I think that's all part of our educational plan, you know, what Barbara works on on a regular basis and trying to help our staff and students feel safe.
Did you want to?
Oh, I was just, I, Andrew went right where my head went, just to make sure that, you know, I would hope that it comes when you don't need permission to use a gender-neutral bathroom. I think that having to go ask for permission or making sure administration knows is, is problematic. You should be able to just use the restroom.
Right.
You know, and wherever you're most comfortable, and, and I would expect that there could be not only, only students that would follow protected classes, but there might even be other students who have medical issues or things that they would prefer to have a private restroom.
Or you've been hassled by someone in the.
Yeah, and they just need the privacy.
And the onus is on us to just let people know they're available, and that we're not monitoring who's using.
And it's, it's not locked, the bathroom itself must be locked, it's still, it's available for anyone. The bathroom itself plus is a lock, it's still, it's available for anyone who wants to use it, but I'm guessing there's a feeling perhaps by our students that they need to have permission
Sure.
to use that bathroom, because it's probably in their head of an adult, you know.
Sure. Chris.
Mrs. Dorf, do all the schools now, or Ms. Paula, all the schools now have LBGt clubs, all high schools?
Oh, the all the high schools do and
So it seems to me that would be a source to go back to, to see what concerns they have, be it bathrooms or anything else, I mean, involve the the kids, I think. Uh since you added these three areas of gender, you still need the the term sexual orientation in there, and then a question right after that is, why did you take out mental, emotional or learning attributes?
We, I believe, still need sexual orientation because it's different than gender identity, gender expression and gender nonconformity, um so I I I
Correct.
I do think it's different, and um why did we take out emotional orientation?
And and those are spelled out in the roles, I can't remember.
Stiff, family status, or physical
I know the gender part's spelled out, sexual orientation's spelled out.
Any other bases protected by state or federal law, right?
Right, we took it out because of disability handicap or any other basis, yes, that was covered.
It's protected by federal law or state law.
And to make it consistent with the bullying and harassment policy as well.
Yeah. Any other question?
Just to, just to be clear, I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the um the leader, the leadership groups that focus on LGBT issues are, they're all GSAs, right?
Couple of them.
Gay straight alliance, you wouldn't have a, you wouldn't probably label and have an LGBT club, which I'm sure that's not what you meant, but we, usually it's a gay straight alliance.
Thank you, yes.
That's what it's identified for us in our unit campus club and activity roster.
GSA.
GSA.
Okay. Alright, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward, and we will go on to The bullying?
The bullying. Revisions to harassment and or bullying of students' policy.
So, we added the word parental, um
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, I can take it, sure. Um a- again, we just wanted to make the language similar to the previous policy we just reviewed, so we needed to adder the word parental because that also um marital or parental status, marital status no longer includes parental status because not a- all parents are married, um and then um gender, we added the gender expression and gender nonconformity, we had already had gender identity in this policy.
Mm-hmm.
And again, to make sure that we're clear about the differences between gender identity, gender expression and gender nonconformity. So, same as the previous policy.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I just wanna make sure that's also looked at in terms of staff.
Yes, I um I think Randy is here and um Randy can start looking at the the policy, staff as well as our staff handbook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward. Thank you.
Just a reminder that policy takes two readings.
Yep.
So
This was a first
Betcha.
I just got out of everything. Oh, there you go. Alright, and that concludes our teaching and learning work session.
Alright, thank you Katie. Next we'll move to the operation uh support work session or organizational support work session, um now be facilitated by you.
Alright, uh four discussion items, under business and finance, we have none, under human resources, we have the job description for pupil services secretary job description.
Good evening, we um we have one uh update to a uh job description which actually comes uh through a position, I don't need Barb, where is Barb?
She has to
I'm sorry, I don't need, okay, I don't need, I don't need Barb's watch.
Barb's here.
Um this is a position that's been held by employee that's evolved over a number of years into a position that has a different role than what it has before, um and Barb has come forward with some information about how she would like to have that position looked.
Thank you. Um the the position had never been part of, the clerical union, um for many years it was um the person in that position supported Indian Ed and it was a half-time position, and um in order for the the person to have been actually at the level where the clerical were being paid, they would have, that person would have been paid more than the homeschool coordinators, and that was not gonna be okay because the grant only allowed for so much money. So while the person was doing the work of a clerical, because of the grant funding, all we could offer was a certain amount of money. Well, that continued on until this became a full-time position, um it was within my office, became at risk, it was McKinny Vento, it was Indian Ed, it was several other grants, and the position really grew, and then we came upon like the freeze of of salaries. And so for the last really three to four years, th- there there has not been an opportunity. So now, um in working with Jean and and Kim and Randy, we, they, her position, this person's position was analyzed and it was found to be much like a pupil services clerical position, level four, and so the position description was rewritten, and what we wanna do is is try to bring this position to where it should be and and compensate it at the level in which the work is being done.
Okay.
Which which is grant-funded?
Which is all grant-funded, none of it, it will be paid through um district funding, um and and she supports many, many grants.
Okay, sounds good. Any
Just what what Jean has and and the team have been trying to do on HR is really bring these positions into alignment so that job descriptions really reflect what people are doing, um and I think Ruth has been done, the person we're talking about, whether she, but whether it's her or not, in this position, this is needed and it and it's, it makes great sense in alignment with what person is doing.
That is, that is correct, we're we're doing a a look at a lot of positions right now to bring them all up to date, to make sure that they're accurate for the work that's being done. This particular position um is a a person who's been in the position and won't be posted as a new position, typically when a position is accreted into a bargaining unit, the uh existing employee moves into that position, um so it'd be our intention to allow this person to move directly into the position that she's been doing.
Acronym, DOG grants, what is DOG?
Department of Justice, sorry.
Department of Justice, okay, that's okay, you know
Yeah.
Just DOJ, not D O J.
DOJ, DOJ.
I thought I caught all of those
I knew what you meant.
Barb knew what I meant.
Yep.
Thank you Barb.
That's right.
If I may piggyback on uh the comments, uh I I believe that HR's been finding a lot of little oddball positions, by a lot, I mean, several I should say, uh and I appreciate that they are spotting them, bringing them forward like this to make sure these uh employees are recognized and compensated uh in a just and equitable manner.
That's correct. Anything else?
Oh, I think it's a good thing that you put that it's grant-funded on the job description, so, I'm not sure that I had, I've seen that before, I just don't recall, but if not, then I Right. Probably why. I think that's important with it.
Is it permanently grant-funded or?
Well, it certainly has been, in my eleven years of tenure here, we, we're good at writing grants in my department, so.
So the intent is to have it be grant-funded for
But it's, it's aligned with programs that are
With McKinny Vento.
Right.
Right, and it's a clear
Indian Ed and
Description of the job that when you're writing the grants, it
Yep.
Right.
Put in some for support, you always put in some money for support.
Okay. It's Andrew's calling.
Excuse me, Andrew, would you call it, Chris?
I was trying to, several of them looking at me, Chris.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm your turn.
I'm still Katie's meeting, I, I apologize.
I didn't get my nap today, I
Or we're too email.
Do we have other, besides clerical, do we have other staff members, uh such as teachers that are being paid uh totally through grants, would you know that offhand?
Yes, I would know some, um
And I guess my question is, do we have in their job description that they're paid by a grant, and so I I'm not sure
Can I could give you an example?
Where helps, when or another, for what purpose?
We could certainly provide that information.
Well, I think, I think it's, if it's a grant-funded, especially this position in particular, all your eleven years that you've been here, it's been grant-funded, I think it's important to, this is a public document, I think it's important to put that on there, but if there's some, you know, variability with whether or not a particular position is grant-funded, then I'm not sure that it's necessary to put that out there, I mean, I think I leave that up to the judgment of the staff.
I think the significance of putting grant-funded would let me know if I were applying that it's not a permanent position.
Yes, exactly, that's exactly right. I mean, I I think that
That it's tied
That it's tied, that's exactly what I'm saying.
That's right.
But I think it was our intent to let
Yep.
First of all, I think to let you know that it wouldn't be an increase in district dollars
Sure.
because it's grant-funded, but in the job description, I I think I would wanna know that if I were applying for a job.
Absolutely.
But would be posted somewhere else as well.
Okay, then that begs the question, if we didn't have the grant funding for this position, would we need this position anyway?
We would need the McKinny Vento part of it if we did not get the McKinny Vento grant, because we're fortunate enough to have gotten the grant every year, but the work that has to be done, has to be done by districts who don't get the grant every year, so the point five that she supports McKinny Vento, we would have to provide the McKinny Vento support, so, um that that we would need. At-risk, probably, um but, you know, we we have to, we have, by by the law, we need to still do at-risk, we just no longer get funded for at-risk, we were getting funded for at-risk, just kind of absorb that work, that to-ence into this position being funded by the grants because this position deals with a lot of at-risk students, so it it didn't go over to a district, um you know, to a district-funded person, but we still have to do the at-risk work, but there's no more funding from from the state.
So I think, Kate, what we would need to do with the grant ended was sit down like we do with all of our staffing pieces and determine whether there's, continues to be a need, is there somewhere else to locate the work, if we don't?
Right.
And then would be funded as a district if it is still needed, so we have to go through that decision-making process at that time.
Okay.
These are three, three and four-year grants, they're not one-year grants.
Okay.
So we know we have stability.
And there's currently a person in this
Mm-hmm.
position.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I I'm attending to your point, Kim, that when you see that something is grant-funded, that is gonna discourage some people
Mm-hmm.
from applying.
Mm-hmm.
And we want to be careful not to, not to do that, if we don't have to. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I think we'll move that forward, and that's the only item, organizational support.
Alright, thanks Andrew, um we do have a closed session tonight, so I'll read that motion. Closed session has been scheduled for Monday, March third, immediately following the adjournment of the work session meetings at the district office building pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which is or is likely to become involved to wit potential litigation matters. Pursuant to Wisconsin statute eight nineteen point eight five one C, considering improvement, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one F, considering financial, medical, social or personal history or disciplinary data of specific person's preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except for paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit personnel matters. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public property, seeing investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit potential property contract. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided in law.
So moved.
Second.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Weyer?
Aye.
We will move across the hall.